Planning zoning commission for the city of Granbury will now come to order at 6:00 PM on Monday, March the 13th, 2023, Granbury City Hall, City Council chambers. First thing I would like to do is recognize the service and time commitment of an outgoing member that we had, John Grace. We'd like to thank him for being available over the last few years so that we can get the business done of the city and have a quorum. Appreciate him spending his time. And then I'd also like to introduce our new P&amp;Z commission member, which is, if you'll raise your hand, I don't think you have your name tag, it's not, it's on order, it's not here, but Skip Overdeer. So, welcome Skip, we're glad you're going to volunteer your time to help the city of Granbury also. Okay, so the first item on the posted agenda is, we don't have public comments on non-, no. We will be the consent agenda, approval of the minutes, February 13th, 2023, regular meeting minutes. Do I have any corrections or changes? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve them as presented by staff.
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Moore to approve the minutes as presented by staff. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hayes, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Yeah, I gotta vote, yeah. Motion nays, no, motion carries five oh. The second item on the agenda tonight is D1, public hearing, consider their request of 4905 G R H Development LLC to final plat a 36.798 acre tract of the W. Williams survey, abstract number 574, as lots one through 13, block one, lots one through nine, block two, and common area of the Modern Oaks addition. The property is located on Glen Rose Highway, State Highway 144, south of Nob Hill, and this is PL dash 2023 dash O2. Kira?
My God, thank you. So, our first slide here shows you the location of the property outlined in teal. The location was stated, the size of the site is 36.7 acres. It is in ETJ, extraterritorial jurisdiction, and we've seen this in the past. It's come back since the final plat expired, therefore the preliminary plat had expired. They've already secured approval of a new preliminary plat, and now they are final plating. All of the content of the plat has remained the same throughout the course. So, as we go through this a bit quick, this is the plat layout. There are 22 lots and one common area purposed for drainage. They had variances, and on this slide, I'd just like to explain the connectivity variance. They can only connect to the south. As on the aerial here, you see that to the north, and the northish-east sides has already developed, and therefore no connectivity can be gained. Therefore, those variances were granted. That's the second page of the final plat. Photograph of the site, looks a little different. It's been graded a little bit for that street area. My application. Again, a review of the board and council actions that were taken in the past, and this final plat is the next step. This slide summarizes the several variances that were granted and the infrastructure and service delivery impacts. The drainage was reviewed and approved, the wastewater and water plans, there's domestic water by Aqua, and onsite sanitary facilities on lot, that's septic. Transportation access is from 144 and a point to the south. Electrical is United Cooperative Services, parks and open space are not practical at this site since it's in the extraterritorial jurisdiction. Staff is recommending approval, and these are your voting options. Thank you. If you have questions, I'll take them.
Thank you, Kira. I'll open the public hearing, and it's the applicant hearing, if so, would you like to speak?
Yeah, I'm available.
Any questions for the applicant commission members? No questions, then we won't call you forward, sir. Any questions for city staff? If not, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion on the final plat request.
Chair, I move to approve as presented.
Have a motion by Mr. Hayes to approve as presented. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Mr. Class, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. The next item on agenda is D2, public hearing, consider a request of Vicki Nivens for special, specific use permit to allow a short-term rental STR residential unhosted in a residential 8400 R 8.4 zoning district. The property's address is 520 East Bridge Street and it's SUP 2023 dash zero five. Kira?
Thank you. This item comes back to you today because of a defective notice. When we have a defective notice, we have to return to the planning commission for rehearing. So, we'll present this item outlined on the location map. In teal is the subject site location. It is an existing short-term rental, having been approved in the past, and the applicant is seeking to reestablish the SUP. The proposal is for an unhosted facility with two bedrooms. This surrounding area consists of single-family residential, as well as along Bridge Street, there are several existing short-term rentals, and to the south of this site is commercial. So, this is the zoning map. The yellow indicates single-family residential zoning. The purple there to the north is a PD zoning with single-family residential as a base, and to the south is light commercial with retail and hotel use there. This is a context map. The idea is to show where the nearby short-term rentals are located. Those are outlined in pink on the map. I'll give you a minute to look at those, not much has changed. This is the site plan. The dark on the, towards the top of the map is a existing swimming pool. The house is towards the bottom of the site there, and the parking is off of Bridge Street there to the lower right corner. The project has two parking spaces, which satisfies the ordinance needs for two parking spaces, one per each bedroom. This is the floor plan demonstrating the purpose of each of the rooms in the building, and it does show the two bedrooms. This is a photograph from the street side. The access to the property is there to the right. The parking lights screening is accomplished by the building and fencing, is the application. There's criteria by which to consider an SUP, and these are the criteria in Section 11 1A. Is the use harmonious? The use appears to be harmonious, and if it can perform in alignment with its conditions and requirements of the city code and the zoning ordinance, as well as the supplemental conditions, standards rather, then it can perform as a harmonious and adaptable to the uses of the abutting property. Number two is, are the activities aligned and normally associated with the requested use? Yes, it appears that those are aligned. Number three is, is the nature of the use reasonable? In our comprehensive plan policy document for the city, the short-term rental is identified for areas in historic districts. This is located in a historic district. And number four, are measures taken that will secure and protect the public health, safety, and general welfare? Of course, we have our standards in the zoning ordinance and also in the city code. In this case, we look to the parking, two parking spaces are available and will be provided Then we have Section 11 1B, specific use permit regulations. These are criteria for considering the proposal. Number one applies to another district, so it's not applicable in this section or in this site. The information that's been provided appears that the use will be harmonious with the surrounding area. The parking will be screened, as mentioned before, and the P&amp;Z may recommend conditions as you see necessary and related to the activities proposed. The applicant needs to agree to conditions. Number six, the zoning ordinance, Section 4.18 point G, states that an SUP issued in conjunction with a short-term rental permit shall become void upon the expiration, non-renewal, termination, voluntary relinquishment, nor, or non-renewal of any related short-term rental permit. And this continues, these are some generalized standards in our code, the zoning ordinance related to granting. If there's a building permit, it needs to be secured within six months of the approval, and that goes to the city council date of approval, presuming that happens. Number eight is that the activity in the site needs to be aligned with that what is approved by the SUP. Number nine is the board of adjustment cannot make an effect to a use SUP requirements. And then, when the council authorizes the SUP, it becomes amendment to the zoning ordinance, and they're prescribed administrative activities that need to take place, which we always do. Regarding public notice, on February 3rd, city staff sent out 21 notices to property owners within 200 feet and on the text roll. And we also, on February 25th, published in the Hood County News, the notification as required. As of today, we've received two letters in favor and one letter in opposition to the And staff is recommending approval. Subject to these conditions, the SUP would have a one-year term, subject to the site plan as well as the floor plan, and no more than two bedrooms. The remainder of the conditions are standard. The number four is that the SUP is also subject to the supplemental standards contained in the zoning ordinance. And number five, subject to other city code requirements, permits, inspections, inspection fees. And then number six is supplemental land use standards or terms of conditions stipulated in the SUP. If violated, would be a violation of the zoning ordinance, and the SUP may become null and void, and/or the certificate of occupancy may be revoked. This slide shows your voting options, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Kira. I'll open the public hearing. Applicant representative, would you like to speak at this time?
Oh, yeah, we should.
Commission members? Okay, if not, I'll go, we have three speakers on this agenda item, and the first one is Mr. Dwight. Oh, that's you? Oh, I'm sorry, Amy, I'm so sorry. Mrs. Dwight.
Hi, my name is Amy Dwight, I live at 405 Count's Alley. I really have, when I was looking at the agenda, what jumped out at me is this thing was approved in 2019 and has been being run as, without a permit, for three years. How does that happen? A lot of the SUPs here get approved with conditions, and I've always had the question, where's the enforcement, how do we know that these conditions are being met? So, that's my question. How does this happen? How do we keep it from happening again? Because, over and over again, every SUP seems to have conditions. And if the entire SUP itself doesn't, isn't even being flagged for renewal, how do we know anything else is?
Would you like to address that? We talked about that last meeting on how this, the new system.
Sure, so, we have a new system that we're putting in place, and a new permitting system that was established in December of this year, last year, December of 2022, as a result of the July 22 new ordinance. So, we're bringing this forward as we identify them. The applicant either has an option to request for a new SUP to reestablish and bring it into conformity, or they may cease operations. It's entirely on their prerogative as to what direction they're looking to take.
The next speaker is Mr. Peter Garland.
Thank you, Chair. Members of the commission, my name is Peter Garland. I live at 511 East Bridge Street, directly across the street from 520. From Stockton Street until the end of Bridge Street, there are 11 bed and breakfast, short-term rentals. One of those, I can, I count as a bed and breakfast because it's actually a parking lot for the big Hotel Lucy. There's an additional seven or eight houses that could be converted into short-term rentals. The biggest problem we have in this country is moderate housing, moderately priced housing. Every house on East Bridge Street could have been bought when they were converted over for less than $300,000, except for 503 East Bridge. Where are people going to buy houses, put sweat equity into them, for them to live, if they're going to be vacant for three or four days a week because they're an SUP for tourists? We have hotels, but it seems to me that we're going to make between Rucker Street and East Bridge Street, and probably Westbridge Street, they're all going to end up in the next few years being short-term rentals. There's no neighborhood. I have no neighbors across the street from me. I used to have kids over there playing across the street. I had people I could wave at and walk across the street and talk to. There are nobody for me to call if I need something, directly next to me or across the street from me. I love living there, and I'll tell you a little secret. On Friday night, I stayed at a short-term rental in Austin. It had an outdoor bathroom. On the second floor, directly facing the street, there was a commode and a shower. I happened to use the commode, and my son and, my daughter and son-in-law used the shower. Now, I'm hoping our zoning is not going to allow stuff like that, but the house was magnificent, it was an artist residence. But anyways, I just wanted to let you know, I do use bed and breakfast, short-term rentals. But to have 11 of them between Stockton and the end of Bridge Street, which is probably a quarter of a mile, I mean, I think it's ridiculous. And it's overzoning, as far as I'm concerned. I thought we were supposed to be called single-family residential. So, please consider when you're doing these, the concentration that we have in here. I mean, it is just absolutely, I think, ridiculous, but thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Garland. The next speaker is Mr. Gaffin.
Right, Gaffin, 4103 Crescent Drive, Granbury, Texas. Longtime citizen of Hood County. All I'd like to say is that on Google Earth, you can actually go back, you can backdate your drive down the street to a certain date, and I would like for all of y'all to do that and see how aesthetic my client Vicki Nivens has made East Bridge, and how she's lessened the density in that particular area for one reason or another. But please, get into Google, take a step back, take a look at it. If y'all have any questions, I'm available.
I have a question for you. How did, does she not know that she's supposed to pay every year for her permit? I mean, that's something, as a businessperson, I would have kept up with. Why didn't she come down and pay her yearly permit fee?
Well, we talked a little bit about that last, last month, I believe you were here, as a matter of fact.
Yeah, but I didn't get an answer.
I did know there was a specific question that, but to answer your question, she'll be glad to pay anything that she's owed, or anything that she owes back to the city. In fact, I had mentioned that if there was anything that she needed to pay in arrears to the city, she'd be more than happy to do that, sir. And that it was an oversight on her part, there are not notices that go out from the city, and I think it was just something that got overlooked. I can promise you, next year, it will not get overlooked. She will be here at Community Development in January, preparing for another SUP round on those three residences.
Thank you.
Thank you for the question.
Any other questions for commission members of the city or the applicant's representative? Mr. Class?
Kira, just a question about the density issue again. It's my understanding a while back that that was being addressed, that there would only be, the city would only allow so many of the short-term rentals in a particular geographic area. Can you speak to that?
Sure. So, there was a proposal in front of council last fall, and that proposal was not adopted, and so there was, there's no density requirement.
Any other questions, commission members? If not, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion on the SUP request before you.
Chair, I move to approve as presented.
Have a motion by Mr. Hayes to approve as presented. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second, Mr. Overdeer, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
How about we raise hands? That would be good. Thank you. And those opposed? You have it? Or do you need it? You have recorded what you need? Sorry, okay. So, the SUP is approved on a 3-2 vote. The next item on the agenda tonight is D3, a public hearing, request of Karen Hagler for a specific use permit to allow short-term rental STR residential unhosted in a residential 8400 R 8.4 zoning district. The property's address is 401 East Bridge Street, which is SUP 2022 dash 19. Kira?
And here's our location map for this property. The site is located there in teal, on the northeast corner of Bridge Street in Stockton. And this site is zoned single-family as well as historic preservation overlay. At this time, there is no review requirement by the Historic Preservation Commission, and the proposal is for a short-term rental unhosted with two bedrooms. This is a zoning map showing in yellow the single-family district there, that the site is zoned for single-family. To the north of the property is zoned PD for single-family residential, and the blue on the map shows public use, that's the Langdon Center. Again, this is a context map showing nearby short-term rentals, and that's within 600 feet, gives you a little idea of those that are located nearby. The surrounding area in context is single-family plus the Langdon Center and the Bridge Street Museum, which, let me just back up here a second here. The Bridge Street Museum is immediately west across Stockton from this property. And this is the submitted site plan that the applicant provided. The house is on the southern portion of the site, with the parking and driveway on the north side of the house. This is the floor plan showing two bedrooms and other designated spaces of the interior of the house. And a photograph, this is a fairly recent photograph of the property. The application and the criteria, I won't read these as I did with the past case, just to shorten things up for us all a little bit. But for number one, speaks to the performance history, there's no performance on this property, and the question is, will it be compatible and harmonious with the surrounding area? The site is situated similarly to other short-term rentals that are unhosted, and if it performing well, then it can be demonstrated to be harmonious and adaptable to the surrounding area. Are the activities normally associated with the requested use? Based on the application content, the uses are normally associated with the short-term rental unhosted use. Is the use reasonable? The site is located in the Historic Preservation Overlay District, which is compatible with the comprehensive plan recommendations, and the zoning ordinance indicates those areas for short-term rentals. And are measures taken to secure the public health, safety, and general welfare? Fencing provides parking and screening, and the driveway has been widened for safer access. Two parking spaces are provided, and two parking spaces are required. And these continue in other sections, zoning ordinance 11 1B for SUPs. The content of the application indicate the use will be harmonious and is located in a historic district nearby to historic and tourist-oriented uses. The infrastructure improvements are not proposed and not required. The screening will be provided to protect the neighboring properties from headlight sweep, and a condition is included for that. The P&amp;Z may require additional conditions. And the applicant needs to agree to conditions in order for conditions to be required. The section of the zoning ordinance 4.18G states that SUPs are issued in conjunction with a short-term rental permit are void upon expiration, non-renewal, termination, voluntary relinquishment, or non-renewal of any short-term rental permit. We have an annual permit that each short-term rental needs to comply with. And these are the standard criteria regarding the obtaining of a permit within six months of the SUP grant, that the SUP site plan and floor plan must be adhered to. Board of Adjustment doesn't have jurisdiction over the use, and city council and granting, then certain requirements are administratively required, such as updating the zoning map. On this site, this has been a long time getting to this point, and I just felt that it's important to remind everybody of this. And with the photograph that you saw of the site, the site's come a long ways. The applicant has certainly made quite an endeavor to clear the property and remove a lot of the overgrowth and to improve the building. So, I'm going to take you on this little bit of journey, it might take a couple minutes, but it's important. So, in May of 22, the Historic Preservation Commission was presented with a proposal to improve the property. That included fencing, windows, and exterior remodeling and restoration. Following that, they reviewed a proposal to widen the site driveway onto Stockton. It was very narrow, appropriate for smaller vehicles, but not for larger vehicles. The SUP then came forward after the Historic Preservation Commission actions, and the P&amp;Z denied the SUP for a bed and breakfast unhosted on the site. At that time, recall, in 2022, the use was called a bed and breakfast, now it's called a short-term rental. July 15th of 22, prior to getting to city council, the applicant decided to withdraw the SUP rather than moving forward to city council. Then, in September 14th of 22, the applicant made a new application for the SUP for short-term rental unhosted. In October 17th of 22, a public hearing was held by the P&amp;Z, and the application was continued to after Historic Preservation Commission. There was a pending application to review and revisit landscape design, and that took a little bit of time for the Historic Preservation process to conclude. But the application in front of them was split. In November 17, they approved certain landscape design improvements. And then, in January 26, they considered, and finally, on, considered other landscape design options, and finally, on February 9th, 2023, they approved the landscaping design for the property. So, it's taken quite a while, and here we are, March 3rd, in front of the P&amp;Z, to consider the application that was continued from October 17. The primary contention between October 17th and now was the use of gravel or decom- was the use of gravel or decomposed granite for their landscaping. The Historic Preservation ended up approving a plan presented by the applicant with a significant portion of that lot being in grass. So, that's how that came about. And now, we're here with the SUP for consideration. And pending your decision, then it will proceed to city council. We sent public notice to surrounding property owners, 21. Public notices were mailed on March 2. And on February 25, notice was also published in the Hood County News. And as of this writing, that's what's shown on the slide. Today, we have two letters in favor of the proposal. And additional two letters came in today, so there's six letters received in opposition to the request. And I failed to put in a staff recommendation slide. I apologize for that. Staff is recommending approval of the application, subject to the conditions contained in your staff report, which would include a term limit of one year, subject to the site plan as well as the floor plan, a maximum of two bedrooms, and then our three other standard conditions that we always include. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Kira. I'll open the public hearing. And is the applicant here? And if so, would you like to come to the podium and speak?
Yes, hi. Excuse me. I'm Karen Hagler, and I'm residing at 401 East Bridge Street currently, and have been there since December. And the two things that I really want you guys to know is that I am planning on spending a good five months of the year at this property, living here. And probably the other portion of the year, I will be at another location that I also own. So, I am not asking necessarily, these are my plans at this point in time, for full-year type of short-term rental. And one of the other speakers earlier said that they didn't have neighbors because of these short-term rentals. Well, I've been here since December, and I've talked to many, many delightful people in that neighborhood at that time. The other thing about this building is, Kira recommended, this has been a long process to get to this point tonight. I should be exhausted, but I really am not. Anyway, inside the building, I think historically, this will be a really good example of actually how the town started with little cabins. Because we had to go to basically the studs. Well, there weren't studs. We ended up with the first two rooms being the original rooms of the cabin. So, they still exist, and I left one exposed so that any visitors and/or stay, people who stay, can actually see the construction of this building, which was built in 1883. The tax records say 1877, but I did, that's another thing. I did a huge amount of research, filled in all the people, and there were a lot, that lived in this house, and gave a presentation to the Historical Society, which I've also belonged. So, I intend to be a part of your community, is what I'm trying to say. And I want this to be a short-term rental while I'm not here, because I don't like vacant buildings. I don't think it's good for the building. And I have Ginger Horn is the one who has also agreed to oversee this for me. And I think you all might have recognized her name. And she has, I think, 11 in this town, all of which are maintained beautifully. She has a high recommendation. She's a local grand behring also, too. So, those are the two things that I would like to put forward to you, and then I will certainly accept any questions.
Any questions, commission members, for the applicant? Mr. Moore?
Yes, good evening. You said you're not going to be here for seven months of the year. Is that correct?
I'm planning on spending five months here, yes, or more. And that depends a lot about how the future goes. But those will not necessarily be consecutive, probably four months at one given time. It may be more than that. But that's what I'm doing this year, at least, anyway. I came in the 1st of December, moved in, and I will leave in June of this year. So, actually, I think we've got a little bit more time than that.
Okay. Probably my biggest concern would be, who would the contact be in the event of a disturbance?
Yes, sir. It's Ginger Horn, and she has hosted homes by Ginger, is the name of her company. So, she runs a, she runs bed and breakfasts and also the unhosed ones, too. So, we have a local contact for this building. And she's been involved as far as watching the progress on it.
Okay. So, you have a contract with her, then?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I have a question for staff.
Yes, sir.
No, I have a question for staff.
Oh.
I count, I want to just get records straight. I count five against instead of four against. I have a separate letter here from Dwight William.
Okay. Let me check that.
Okay.
While she's doing that, if there are any questions for the applicant, I'm going to call some of the speaker cards forward. Thank you, ma'am. Our first speaker is Lou James.
Good afternoon. I'm Lou James. I live at 407 Council Alley. I'm here because you sent me a letter inviting me. Thank you. In that letter that you sent inviting me, you said that you consider a number of factors, including density. And also, you gave me a map showing density. So, you did all the work for me. Well, Ms. Wawie did all the work for me. The city council considered density some time back. City staff recommended a 300-foot zone, 300-foot exclusion zone, which Planning and Zoning concurred with and set up. City council rejected that. So, that means that it's, it falls back on you individually to use your individual judgment. Actually, it's flattering that they rejected it, because that means that they trust you to use your reasoned judgment about what is too much density. And if you look at the density map, there are 1, 2, 3, 4 right now within 600 feet. And an additional 3, just a few hundred feet, or just a little bit down the street from that. This is single-family residential. If this isn't too much density, then what is? And when you consider density, we, the homeowners, have our rights, of course. And it seems to me that those of us that bought a single-family residence in a single-family residential neighborhood should have some say in what happens. And I believe there are two letters in favor and either five or six against. So, that is some evidence that you had. At some point, if you keep granting short-term rentals, you turn the residential neighborhood into a de facto hotel district. In fact, one of these single-family residences has a very nice awning that says Hotel Lucy. Beautiful awning says Hotel Lucy on one of these single-family residences that has an STR. So, again, I don't want to see us become a de facto hotel district. So, please, use your reasoned judgment, consider density, and this is just too much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. James. The next speaker is Mrs. Dwight.
My name is Amy Dwight. I live at 405 Council Alley. I also got one of the letters, because I am within 200 feet of this property. Basically, agree with my neighbors. We feel like there are already way too many STRs in our neighborhood. I personally don't think short-term rentals really are a compatible or harmonious use in a single-family residential neighborhood. Properties that sit vacant that much of the time don't give us neighbors. What's a neighborhood supposed to be without neighbors? As I think Mr. Garland mentioned as well, when these properties go up on the market, if they are not immediately snatched up by investors, maybe we would actually have neighbors who would purchase them, put in sweat equity, and live here all the time, not just a few months and rent it out however many other months of the year. The other issue is the density. Couple of people have brought up the fact that staff did all that work to come up with a proposal on density. City council rejected it. In that meeting, I seem to recall that there was a suggestion that there was going to be a workshop to try to come up with a better alternative on density. Nothing has happened. That just died in the water. Why? It really, I just, everybody's already said, this is ridiculous. You're turning our neighborhoods into de facto hotel districts. And unless we get something down on paper, it just keeps happening. SUPs come up, SUPs get approved, there's an occasional condition here, condition there. With this property, you have the HPC landscaping requirement. How do we know, based on what happened with the Hotel Lucy properties, how do we know that that's going to happen? I think there's a certain period of time allowed to make that happen. Where's the enforcement? Where's the notification if the SUP is approved? How does that work? I just, you know, it's frustrating to be on our side, I guess.
Well, I think I can speak to the landscaping. Isn't that not, Kira, a condition of the certificate of occupancy that will be generated? Will they not have to do that to start, before they start renting?
On this property, there are requirements for the installation of the landscaping that's related to the historic preservation approval.
She made the comment, how would we know that was going to get done? Isn't that going to have to be done and signed off on before they get their certificate of occupancy or are allowed to start booking? Okay. So, I don't know if that answers that question, at least.
That does answer that question. Thank you.
Okay.
That's all I got.
Thank you, Ms. Dwight. And the last speaker on this item is Mr. Peter Garland.
I am Peter Garland. I live at 511 East Bridge Street. Again, the density thing is the thing I'm concerned about. This house was on the market last year for $239,000. Now, you tell me that a nice young couple couldn't buy that house and fix it up and live in it and have a child or two instead of having it sit empty seven or five months of the year. She has done a marvelous job of painting it up, and it looks very nice. And she says it's historic inside, and I do believe her. But the, whatever the gravel or whatever that stuff is in there, I am, was concerned about that. But you've already assured me that she will not be able to operate as a short-term rental until it receives the approval, I guess, from the Historic Preservation Commission, that the work has actually been done. But this is not Cucamonga, California, which is probably the style that she's accustomed to, being from California. And the rocks, just, we know we've had multiple inches of rain in this town several times since I've been here. One year, we had seven inches in one day. And all that stuff is going to just be going down towards Old Mill Crossing, whatever, down Stockton Street. Anyways, the density is my major concern, and I hope you will consider that in making your decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garland. Kira, I, you don't happen to have the landscape plan, do you? I pulled it back up and went back into the Historic Commission stuff and looked at it. So, everything that looks to me like outside, the street side of the picket fence is all going to be grass. With the exception of some small little flower beds that I, when I was by there yesterday, look like they're outlined in rocks. But I think that's all grass outside of the picket fence?
I believe so. I would have to look at that plan.
Any questions for the applicant or staff?
I just, I just had a question. This density thing, okay. So, if city council has already considered it, and they decided not to impose a density restriction. So, if we were to deny this request based on density, we don't, there's nothing on the books that says anything about density. So, what would we be denying based on?
Right. You don't have any criteria on which to base density. So, your criteria is, that's what is already in the zoning ordinance that was reviewed in the presentation?
If I recall, when that came up, it died for lack of a motion. It was my recollection of it at city council.
Correct. It went unapproved.
So, wasn't actually denied. It just was never voted on. So, same, it has the same effect. Mr. Moore? Did you say, no? No one? Questions?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion after reading the five denial letters. I'll make a motion to deny this request.
Letters again. Did you get a clarification on it?
Yes, ma'am. I did a count. There were actually six letters in opposition and two in favor.
Does that trigger anything specifically in our ordinance?
No, it does not trigger anything in the ordinance. It's just an indication of input.
Okay. All right. Anybody else? Okay. If not, I will close the public hearing, and we have a motion on the table by Mr. Erdman to deny the SUP request.
I'll second.
I have a second by Mr. Moore. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have three opposed. Okay. So, the motion fails. The SUP, the motion to disapprove fails for lack of a majority. Not a majority, but it did not pass. So, do I have any other motions?
Chair, I'll move to approve as presented.
I have a motion by Mr. Hafes to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Overdear. Correct? I just wasn't looking that way. Sorry. All in favor of approval of SUP as presented? I assume you're saying with the conditions on number two, Mr. Hafes?
I'm not adding any conditions. The as presented.
The number, okay. As presented, as presented by staff?
Yes.
Okay. So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries 3-2 for approval with conditions as per staff conditions.
So much for the people.
Next item on the agenda is D4, a public hearing, request of T and P Properties Family LP 1 to rezone the portion of a .996 acre tract of the Marcus Smith survey, abstract number 504, from heavy commercial HC to light commercial LC. And 2, for a specific use permit to allow the operation of a contractor shop without outside storage in a light commercial LC zoning district. The property is addressed as 1306 East Highway 377, and this is Z2023-03 and SUP 2023-08. Kira?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to explain just a little bit about this. On companion cases, often, we make the presentation together rather than as separate items. I think over the past year, we've probably done that differently. But we'd like to come forward with companion items on the agenda as one report and as one presentation. So, that's why you're seeing it this way.
But two votes, I take it?
And yes, you'll need two votes or if, let's say if there are three items, then you would take three votes. Yes.
Thank you.
So, I just wanted to kind of explain that, because I think you're accustomed to seeing it differently. Okay. So, here's your slide with your site location map. The site is situated between Crawford and the Highway 377. It's outlined in Teal on your screen there. And it's just a little over one acre in size. The current zoning is a split zoning. We'll show you the zoning map here in a second. But the frontage along Highway 377 is light commercial, and the back portion is heavy commercial. And that was zoned and established in 2001. However, the general plan for this area is for commercial, which corresponds to light commercial district. And the proposed use with a SUP for the contractor's shop with no outdoor storage falls into the light commercial zoning district. So, I'm pausing on this map, because some of these maps are really hard to see. The location of the SUP with contractor shop without outside storage is where that little pink dot is on that building that's towards the north on that lot that's outlined in Teal. So, that's where the SUP would be located. And it's pretty straightforward that it'll be in that building. And the entire site would be zoned, of course, I've approved, to light commercial. The surrounding area, as you can see, the rooftops on your map, that suggests commercial. All those properties surrounding it are some type of commercial or unimproved. There to the north, there's a couple of properties that aren't yet built. There to the north, there's a couple of properties that aren't yet built, and even to the east, a lotter. So to the east, there's one that's not improved yet. And then a second one there, too. So these are pictures of the street view. From the Crawford side is the one on the left, and that's the building that would be the SUP housing the contractor's business. And on the right, there's the retail that you can see from 377. But on the right side of that building, then you can see the building in the back. That's what that looks like. The comprehensive plan policy recommends retail office for this area. Retail is generally offices and sale of goods and provision of services, usually found along major corridors. This is the future land use map, so you can see all that frontage fronting on both Crawford and on the 377 is recommended for office retail. And that kind of orangey color indicates a multifamily, future land use plan recommendation. So the zoning is aligned with the future land use plan map. And this is the zoning map. So the light commercial is there, as mentioned. The site is somewhat split with the light commercial fronting on Highway 377 and the heavy commercial there towards the back. It's the heavy commercial zoning that would be changed. And we went over the surrounding area. We talked about the light commercial purpose. It provides general retail, trade, businesses, and service uses. Typically, it's designed with a shopping center concept, although that, it's not a requirement. And a maximum is two stories in height, located on major streets and signage compatible with surrounding areas, and no open storage is permitted. So that's the contractor's shop with no outside storage. This is just a listing of various uses that are allowed in the light commercial zoning districts, in case we needed to refer to those. The impacts of the zone change, so this, again, does comply with the future land use plan map. The light commercial districts permitted and SUP uses are compatible and consistent with surrounding area. The streets and infrastructure are aligned as well. The area is developed with parking and traffic operations and hours of commercial, and the nature of the surrounding area is consistent with the proposed light commercial zoning. If approved to change, then the site would need to be improved to the requirements of zoning ordinance per development standards of the light commercial districts. And that will be proven out through any permitting review. We would have to take a look at the site plan. The application for the change of zoning and the SUP. The contractor's storage use is defined on this slide. Basically, allows a type of contractor use, like a plumber, to provide the service of electrical and other such improvements for that contractor use. They may have limited sales of electrical and other products. And the supplemental standards requires the outdoor lighting not to impact residential areas. Now, this is not abutting or too close to residential areas, although there is that residential multifamily that, towards the west, along Crawford. And this is your SUP criteria. Generally, this proposal is compatible with the nearby uses. The standards that it sets are reasonable. And the use will be within an existing building, not presenting any hazards to public safety or health or general welfare. The other criteria in 11-1B, again, this proposal is consistent with the site location and, as proposed, will be compatible and not present any concerns to these areas based on staff's review. The PNC may recommend conditions, and this continues on with the SUP. The owner needs to accept and agree to the conditions, and the Planning and Zoning Commission may inquire into the continuation of permit. This is getting into more of the compliance after the use is in place. But all the improvements and so on need to be in compliance with the SUP as granted. And then this slide speaks to more of the procedural aspects of the SUP criteria. On March 2, public notice was mailed to 14 property owners and was published in the Hood County News on February 25, and we've received no input, neither in support nor in opposition to the proposal. Staff recommends approval of the change in zoning, as well as the specific use permit. With the specific use permit, we have four conditions. Standard conditions, activity will be within the existing building. No outside storage of materials, supplies, or equipment is permitted. And that is just a repetition of the use requirements. The SUP is subject to supplemental standards. These last three are standard criteria, are standard conditions. The SUP is subject to city code requirements and permitting and violation condition as well as included. Again, as a reminder, you have two motions to make, the first being the zoning, and then the second addressing the SUP. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Kira. This isn't really to do with zoning or SUP, but do they access that through the gap in the strip center? Is that how they offset that? I didn't see anything coming off the back street.
Yeah, I don't recall seeing anything off the back street.
So they go in that gap between the strip centers? Okay, that's what I thought. Any questions for staff? Okay, well, I'll open the public hearing and close the public hearing, and we don't have any speaker cards. So I will entertain a motion first on the rezoning request, please.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Have a motion by Mr. Moore to approve the rezoning as presented, and a second by Mr. Erdman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now entertain a motion, please, on the SUP request.
Chair, I recommend approval as presented.
Have a motion by Mr. Hafes to approve the SUP with the conditions listed by staff, and a second by Mr. Urban. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Be no further business. The meeting is now adjourned. Thank you all.